Have to uh to accept a donation from you and he's gonna arrange buying flowers and sending it to Chris on our behalf.
Okay.
So whatever you'd like to contribute to him, please do that, that way we don't have to go to the city attorney and ask him for money, which is gonna be a waste of time anyway.
Yeah, he doesn't have it. He gave at the office.
And his folder is in Alabama?
I'm not sure.
I think we think it's either Florida or Alabama.
Florida, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Gosh.
So if you don't mind, just give it to him and he'll give it.
We're here now. Absolutely.
Hmm.
Anyway, Mr. Stein again, don't get sick, don't live at a hospital.
Mm-hmm.
You don't know. Don't do any other stuff.
So he's the public chairman?
He's the collector of the money.
And we recommend. There's a lot of the commercial uses that are acceptable in like easily, that you can do a more commercial, and so the permitted use table will happen more, is there a specific type of use you recommend there?
Uh.
So how many of them are going about personally here? What all you can do with it?
I heard some weeks ago that that would have been for sale.
I can't remember if you can actually do like a business or a guest station. I'll be best if you don't mind, and so can you call me tomorrow morning? And that way I can I'll have my coordinates and I can look at that. Somebody call you, maybe take your time after lunch. Yeah, it's it's not the same as D C and D, which is like the mall, it's it's more restricted, there are a number of uses that have in D C and D that anywhere we could have these activities. Um, yeah, I mean if you have somewhere else, if there is no other like D C and D nearby, then that, you know, then it's about something.
You know, I've heard somewhere that the using emergency places, they need only four and a half patients. Oh, I've heard two and a half patients that they can't.
We touched on that one. But they're doing really good and always full.
Yep. Yeah, and I would say I would have, I would have gone to one of those for that, say, if I don't go, probably I'll just go.
Yeah.
Why, they they can't do it, they won't do it.
Yeah, we just have to do zoning over, well, it was already neighborhood commercial, it's not even the neighborhood commercial area.
They don't. Because they.
And.
If it's mine, I just probably can't.
There's no collection D C and D on that side of um.
That's why it's not mine, yeah. Yeah. It's if it's one inch or below.
Uh.
Yeah.
I doubt you're going to get some.
And that'll be consequences.
You gotta go to a, you oughta go to a real doctor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you come in there with chest pains and you see John.
Well, spot surgery is the issue, you don't wanna have one spot and one, the disease is treated.
Remember, uh, one cough, one has a couple of headache, they didn't do that.
So if you, if nothing is in areas of, there's a lot of infection that needs that major.
Yeah, I don't know if they were, yeah.
I don't know if there's a whole bunch of reasons.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
But from everything out here, they don't need much to drive up.
Well, I think a convenience store is what they're planning for, yeah, so I'm not saying you can't have the convenience store, I wanna say it's just hard to remember, maybe it's a restaurant, it's hard to remember.
Even though a bunch of our.
The problem is, uh, the staffing, you have to be open twenty-four hours and seven days, so finding a minute.
And it's kind of commercial, I can't remember, 'cause I said, I don't know.
Yeah, but the one next to Parket closed, right, they never opened.
That's the one that's got the regional refusing.
Yeah, it never opened, it never opened, no.
No.
No, it's a time off.
I thought it was.
A a couple of months. What else? Cause I only have two, two uh, I've got a lot of things.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Three, four, five, koi hai nahi hai. Shadi ke liye sab aapki tyaari hai, jaise sundare ki yeh sab kona, yeah.
Hmm.
Aali haftay to hai, nahi hai haftay na, wahi, yeah, exactly, aali weekend, yeah.
Yeah.
From the thundin to our ready, so Thursday, Tuesday, Friday, yeah, Wednesday, ladies, koi hai, yeah, Hadi hai, Thursday, uh, Thursday, oh, Mandy ki, Friday, Mandy hai, sorry, Wednesday nahi hai.
Acha Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
Yep.
So. Saturday or Friday.
Hmm. Friday, Mandy hai, Saturday, Mandy hai.
Aapko bata hai na aaj kaam chal raha hai, Shikha, or Mohammed call karte hai, toh agar aap Shadi ko jaate dekse toh bata hai, idea aaja hai, main thing kya hai, list karna hai, rooh ko, ne, boom karna, varna hua kaam, mention ho rhi, aur de karna padega, isko tear down karke, incha fit unchana padega.
I was here before you.
Hmm. Yeah. Hmm.
Yeah. Yeah.
I was supposed to have her to some kind of.
Sae.
Yeah.
Then they postponed it to September, then they postponed it to next summer.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
He's still short.
My mom is not here, I mean, she's born, usko bike it, it's always funny, she don't bother.
She gives off that.
Yeah.
It's always funny.
Oh, yeah.
She keeps calling me and messaging from my phone, so finally I'm at home.
To maine bhi karte hai, maine ek one aapko, kam to jaldi karna cha raha hai, huh, toh kya time kya bata hai, name bhi karte hai.
So tell, I was trying to do this, I think I lied, didn't pronounce the characters, so, yeah.
Kam to dekna padega, maine.
Yeah.
Yeah. Kaise to, my wife, six thirty, it's a jadiya, nasa hai, you see, even shadi mein, she, five, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Just took me this long for that, right? Yeah. I can't figure out, why, why we go to the, in each person now, and then don't know, it's just like that.
So that's right, it's uh, time wait, five, three, two, one.
And.
Yeah, six thirty tak, usko, good, shuru kar raha hai, apki khana, jaldi khane, gno bhi hai.
Organize, check, check.
Excuse me, sir. Three o'clock. Okay. Any other questions? No, we only have two cases, so we're gonna wait for for the city council, so, because it'll, we're gonna have to wait one way or the other, right? Uh, there's nobody with the city council yet, so I was hoping maybe someone, one, there you go, the only one that shows up on time.
Chris is here. Mm-hmm.
So we'll wait a couple of more minutes, if not, we get started.
All right.
To maine bhi, hot, hot, bhi karte hai.
We are gonna have a call with the city, right?
And yaar, 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 nahi, maine na, hot, bhi karte hai. Acha, door change kar rahe hai.
We're fine.
They think.
Which reminds me of days in college when professors would show up, you gotta walk up.
Mm-hmm.
How many minutes we give a minute?
I think a half.
I think fifty. I guess they have a special box or something.
To the women, to the, to the. Five, dule, or hai, kholok, dule, ki, yeh, yeet, phir, teraz, shamaayenge, aap, dusun, ke, stage, or relatives, hai, kya, yeah, yeah.
Maybe just call the police.
Then you see, return anything, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, Shadi, kara, yeah.
That's, that is under.
Yeah, it's a red phone, it should maybe some, takes the phone back.
Yeah. Dule, dule, shadi. Hmm, two different folks, man.
Acha, to, book, it can't be very busy, busy hotaram, hmm, it's a totally wood, coffee busy, or. Hmm. Mera, maine bari khush is karda tha, ke mera, ghar ka CEO ho jata, furniture ho jata, maine aapko bana tha, ke dule ki phir, yeet, bana ke, dusun badi, sani diya maine, but my shipment got late, like three minutes.
Yes.
Hmm.
Yes.
Hmm.
Uh, they, you know, like all over the world, here I find, all here are like empty containers, so all the shipments are so far behind, I don't understand, you know, it's.
Sae. Hmm. 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 Yes, please. I have a few problems, so.
Now, at LSU, she can tailgate and do all that stuff.
Are you misleading?
Oh, I'm good, I'm good, I'm fine.
I get, she feel.
I'm not fine, though.
It doesn't matter?
I'm good, I have.
Good, any more issues from, all the, the officials?
She's got pretty much a beautiful girl.
But, you know, it's just part of, my doctors, that is part of life, you know, all the people that are, I have some issues, but they have to deal with it, learn to live with it.
But she wants to go to the.
Um. Oh. I don't think. I hate that. All the family's good?
Yeah.
Good.
We had a very busy week, my, both of my daughters are here, and their kids are fighting with each other, and I've been telling them, listen, you guys are relatives.
Yeah, get along.
Cousins, group, you know, one is four years old, one is two and a half, so if one hits the other one, then it's, you know, you have to hit them back, if not, then like you're losing the, the World War Four.
I'm a waiter. Yeah. Learning how to solve those battles.
Yeah. And you know, I told my wife, you know, we had four daughters, she always wanted a son, wanted a son, you know, so, when I, my son grew up with girls, and he's like a boy, and more sober, more girl, you know, he's just, he's never grew up to be like a boy.
Yeah. Sure.
But these boys, then I told my wife now, I said, if you had couple of boys, it would come only like a couple of kids, if the way they fight each other, and breaking things, you know.
Oh, it's. Oh, yeah. Totally different.
Tore, tore up. There's no peace at my home right now.
Oh, boy. Are they there in school? Oh, well, oh, with the little, yeah, they can't.
He, yeah, the one is, oh, yeah, he goes to some kinda daycare, but uh, the one, uh, the second daughter, just had a heavy baby, so she would, he would, for pregnancy, she wouldn't deliver it, so, the.
Oh.
That's why mama was easy to ignore, so he was so wild, the the two years old, two and a half year old, but then, well, oldest guy, you know, you wanna start, but he's very nice, but when somebody hit him, he feels like it.
He's gotta do it fast.
What did you do wrong? You must have done something wrong that the mayor brought you.
I was like, okay. How are you out today?
Doing fine, ma'am, thank you.
Good.
Good. We're weighing down the city council forum?
We, yes, ma'am.
Hmm.
We can get started, we have two, two very short cases.
Could you call upstairs, Mike is upstairs, uh, he's in the car for a short, and we may. One other, um, Mayor Purten Samuel, just be done as well. You don't have the extension right now, maybe? I did not. I tell you, let me, I'll call you, you can, your call.
Only six o'clock, likhaava, six hai likhaava, card nahi hai, seven ten bhi aana chal raha hai.
Oh, you talking, maybe, kama?
Six thirty, bhi aana chal raha hai. Thirty seven.
Which means I'm curious, six thirty.
Hmm.
Aapka time hai kya?
So, card for six o'clock hai.
Wahi likhaava, yeah, it is.
You kidding me?
It is, yes, I know.
Sae.
To maine bhi, lo, lo, bhi chalo?
Nahi. I'm in this. Yeah.
Sae.
At least, kholok, no, we should, it's.
Yeah, but one of them is cancer.
Apne is nahi bhi, local, you know, hey, yes, one, so.
No, no, no.
Will you call the.
Private streamer? Yes.
We shouldn't do this.
So your son, he had a job, so.
No, no.
Mm-hmm. You're not blind for it.
Hmm. Yeah.
Fantastic, we can start, get started on our regular meeting, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, my name is Seem, and I wanna welcome you to the Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, joint meeting with the city council, September twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, along with my fellow commissioners, we welcome you, and please make sure that you put yourself on, on uh, uh, on silence, and we get started with the roll call, please.
Chairman Najah.
Here.
Commissioner Beatty.
Present.
Commissioner Javed.
Here.
Commissioner Little is absent, Commissioner Macon.
Here.
Commissioner Noyola is absent, Commissioner Karishi.
Here.
Commissioner Sinagar is absent, and Commissioner Steinhegen.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, we do have a quorum, uh, I've heard sad news this afternoon, that uh, uh, our, our friend's brother, it's, has passed, and uh, uh, we, we wanna give our condolences to Chris and his family, and pray for their well-being, and uh, we have arranged for the Planning and Zoning Commission to send some flowers to him and his family. Uh, with that said, we, you, all of you have received the minutes of the previous meeting, and I would entertain a motion to approve and/or hear your comments about the minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I second.
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it, thank you, uh, we're gonna get started with the first case of our regular meeting, uh, number PZ two zero two one two seven eight, please.
Yes, sir, PZ twenty twenty-one dash two seven eight is a request for a preliminary plat approval of Doge Diamond D Ranch subdivision face C three C. Um, Fitz and Shipman is requesting this preliminary plat approval, um, the project is located in the planning area of the ETJ, the city of Beaumont, south of US sixty nine, uh, US highways ninety, sorry, and approximately one point one miles west of Meeker Road. In December of twenty sixteen, a preliminary plat was filed that included this portion of master plan drive, um, but when the final plat was filed, this was not included as part of that final plat. Um, since it's been more than two years since the original preliminary plat was approved, a new preliminary plat is required, and the applicant states that this is a approximately ninety, that this approximately ninety-seven foot section of the street will allow for driveway access on the, the lot that faces Diamond D Drive. And I do have a slide for you. This is the plat, as you can see, it's just a little short portion of the street that they're asking for preliminary plat approval. And I do have the master plan, and I can show you that this portion is gonna be right here. That's where this little piece of the preliminary plat is.
Great. Is that it?
That's all I have, do you have any questions?
Thank you, ma'am, any questions for her? Uh, the applicant is Fitz and Shipman, correct? Great, great, would you like to make a comment or give us any additional information? Mister King.
All right, my name is Don King with Fitz and Shipman Engineers here in Beaumont at fourteen oh five Cornerstone Court. Uh, as, as we said, the uh, street, their Diamond D Drive was constructed uh, in twenty eighteen, there was a final plat made on the street itself, and the lots that are uh, in yellow that you see there on that master plan. Those are recorded, however, the uh, little streets that extend each way from ma, uh, from Diamond D Drive, uh, were not a part of that plat, and, and so therefore, uh, were not constructed. Uh, since that time, we've had some housings being built on those lots, and uh, this one plus actually the next case that's up here on three D. Uh, the owners have requested the possibility that they could have a side uh, driveway entrance to their homes, and so we wanted to be able to, uh, rather than put in some kind of temporary drive to actually extend the street, uh, in this case, approximately ninety-seven feet, I think this one, yes, on master plan drive, uh, on the west side, so of Diamond D Drive, so that they could be able to access that. We've actually been in contact also with the uh, county engineer's office, as this is located in the county, and ultimately, they will have uh, street maintenance ability or responsibilities once this is constructed and the warranty is, is over with, so we are in coordination with them, and I believe they were sent this plat and made no comments. So, if there's any questions I'll be able to ask, it's, it's just a little short piece of street, but we have to actually record the uh, plat uh, for the right of way.
Sure.
Uh, there's actually no lots involved as the, on the north and south, those lots are previously platted.
Perfect, thank you, Mister King, any questions for the gentleman? Thank you, sir. Let me see here. This does not require public comments, so uh, we've heard from the applicant and also the staff, is there a motion?
I move we approve, um, file two seven eight.
Second.
We have a motion to approve, and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it, thank you, uh, Adina? Two seven nine.
File PZ twenty twenty-one two seven nine is very similar to the case that we just heard, and that Fitz and Shipman is requesting preliminary, preliminary plat approval of Doge Diamond D Ranch subdivision face three D. And uh, this um, project is for a portion of Brangus Trail Drive, which is another street that comes off of um, Diamond D Drive, um, for the same purpose, and I will show you, and this is that plat, that preliminary plat. Once again, it's been more than two years since the original preliminary plat, so they're seeking preliminary plat approval.
Great, any questions? Uh, Mister King, do you have any additional comments?
Again, my name is Don King with Fitz and Shipman, uh, fourteen oh five Cornerstone Court here in Beaumont, uh, again, this is similar to the uh, one that we just heard, and that we need to uh, construct, let's see, in this case, sixty-nine and a half feet of roadway, uh, on the west side of the existing Diamond D Drive. And so to do that, we are requesting uh, dedication or approval of the uh, preliminary plat, and eventually a final plat, so that we can uh, dedicate that right of way and uh, keep everything uh, the way it needs to be to get that street constructed and then dedicated and maintained by Jefferson County. I will point out, we've also contacted the Meeker Water Corporation, we're extending a water line with uh, both of these, uh, so that that way it, everything gets extended to the limits of the uh, roadway extension.
Good, thank you, Mister King. Any questions, folks? I would entertain a motion.
Move for approval of file two seven nine.
Have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes would have it. Adina, uh, two eight zero.
Yes, sir, PZ twenty twenty-one dash two eight zero is a request for approval of a replat of a portion of Lot ten, Lot five, Fourth Street Acres of Beaumont, Virginia, Texas. The plat would divide the property located at twenty seven seventy-five Sixth Street into three building lots. Water lines were not extended along this portion of Sixth Street, for the new lots, they have access to water, the lines will need to be extended at the del, developer's expense. In addition, no utility easement was provided, the subdivision ordinance, uh, section twenty-six point oh three point oh one one states, utility easements and water and sewer facilities shall be provided by the subdivider in accordance with the standards and specifications for minimum water and security sewer performance. Many staff recommends approval with the following condition, one, or conditions, one, water lines of adequate capacity, as approved by the water department, shall be provided as the developer, at the developer's expense, prior to reclamation of the final plat. And two, divided ten foot wide utility easement along the front of the properties. Property notices were sent to fourteen individuals who were part of the unit of this property, within the subdivision, and we received no responses in favor or in opposition.
Any questions for Adina? Thank you, ma'am, is the applicant in the audience?
I don't believe so.
Okay, uh, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case? None is heard, so we close the public hearing, we've heard from the staff, and there's no other public comments, I would entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Sir.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
With the following conditions that were listed.
Right, with the conditions, yeah.
And the second includes the conditions, correct, Mister Beatty?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, sir, uh, we have a motion and a second, no comments, so uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it, thank you. Uh, this was the end of our regular meeting, Madam Mayor, uh, please lead us into the next section.
Thank you, good afternoon. This is a regular meeting of Beaumont City Council and the Planning Commission, together, uh, we will make a recommendation, I'm sorry, the Planning Commission will make recommendations to Beaumont City Council. Today will be the only day that you will have an opportunity to speak on any item that is heard today. If you have any complaints, any recommendations, please make sure that you do that on today, otherwise, we will not speak on any of the items. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mutan.
Here.
Mayor Purten Samuel.
Hello.
Councilmember Felt Shaw absent, councilmember Turner absent, councilmember Neo absent, councilmember Getz.
Present.
And councilmember Durio.
Here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, we're gonna get started with, uh, from what I understand, uh, PZ two zero two one two forty-three has been pulled.
That's correct.
And it's gonna be for some other future meetings, apparently? Okay, all right, thank you, ma'am, so we're gonna go to uh, PZ two zero two one two eighty-nine, and I will recuse myself from this case, and uh, if you would please go ahead and get started with that.
Okay. This is regarding file two oh two one dash two eight nine, Adina? Yes, ma'am, IQ Health Surgery Center is requesting a specific use permit to allow an ambulatory surgery center at sixty-five ten Folsom Drive. The primary use of the property will remain a clinic, open nine AM till five PM, Monday through Friday. In addition to a clinic, the applicant intends to focus on occupational medicine and surgery. Some surgeries may require an overnight stay, and surgeries will be performed, or could be performed seven days a week, the maximum number of patients staying overnight will be limited to three. Staff recommends approval with the following condition, that all building and fire codes related to the use must be met. Uh, notices were mailed to property owners within two hundred feet, we sent thirty-one notices out, and we received none in favor and none. notices out and we received none in favor and none in opposition. I do have a few slides to show you. Um, this is the location and of the property on Folsom Drive showing the, the zonies GCMD two. This is another aerial shot of the location of the subject property. This is the site plan for the look, the subject property. Photo of the front of the property. And this is the rear of the property. This is the property to the east. Property to the south across Folsom. And the property to the west. And that's all I have for you today.
Thank you, any questions of Adina? Okay, thank you, Adina. Is the applicant in the audience? No?
I do have a question then. It says their hours are nine AM to five PM, but it also says that may require an overnight stay, so doesn't that make it a twenty-four hour facility?
It is a twenty-four hour facility and that's why we've made the condition that they meet fires, any requirements that fire, the fire department may have. Uh, when I talked to them, they said the main focus of the clinic will still be the nine to five clinic, but they could at any time receive a call, he said even on a Saturday evening, saying we have, um, someone who was injured in an, in an oil rig or something and they were, they're bringing them in for surgery and in that case they would be keep, most likely keep them overnight for observation.
Okay. And did we have any in favor or in opposition on this one?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, any other questions of Adina? Okay, uh, is there anyone here would like to speak in favor or in opposition? Anyone at all? Okay, we're gonna close the public hearing. Is there a recommendation or a motion or discussion?
I have a motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with the condition?
With the conditions.
Is there a second?
A second with one condition.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna go to, uh, case PZ two zero two one dash two nine one. Sarah Wellness Group.
Yes, sir. PZ twenty twenty-one dash two nine one is a request for a specific use permit. Sarah Street Wellness Group is requesting the SUP to allow medical offices and treatment and counseling facilities, an event hall, community room, and community access to sports facilities, outdoor sport fields, concerts and events, as well as a community swimming pool at thirty-four fifty-five Sarah Street. This property was formerly the Melton YMCA. During its time as the YMCA, most of the proposed uses occurred at this site. The proposed uses should be considered compatible with the surrounding land uses. Planning staff recommends approval with the following condition, that all building and fire codes related to the proposed use must be met. We sent out thirty-seven notices to property owners within two hundred feet and we received zero in opposition and zero in favor. I do have a few slides for you. Um, this is an aerial photograph of the property and the subject property is outlined in red. This is near another aerial shot of the property from the south. Uh, this is a site plan of the property. This is a photograph of the property. From the front. And this is from the side. And from the rear with the field behind it. And this is on the, um, west side. It's also part of the subject property. This is the property to the west, to the northwest, to the north. Also to the north. To the northeast. To the east. Also to the east. And one more to the east, these are all streets that come off adjacent to the facility. And this is the property to the south. And that's all of the photos I have for you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for Adina?
What is the size of the lot?
I believe the entire property is about ten acres, almost ten acres, nine point six five acres, and that's with both pieces.
Thank you.
Great, uh, is the applicant in the audience? Good afternoon, sir. Uh, would you mind stepping up here, introducing yourself, giving us your address and give us any additional information you might have?
Address to the property or to?
Yourself, just so we can get ahold of you if you need to.
Oh, of me, oh, okay. Three thousand seven Caroline Street, Houston, Texas.
And your name?
Troy Marsaw.
Mr. Marsaw, good afternoon to you. Would you have any additional information that you'd like to give us about your project?
No, it's just basically the same thing that was already been used for before I purchased it from the city.
All right. Uh, can you explain to me the medical portion of this activities that's gonna happen here?
It's actually the same thing, um, with two thousand twenty-one two eight nine, the only difference is that we're not providing surgery or performing surgeries, uh, anyone spending the night, but it's the same services that I heard, uh, on two ninety-one. So, it's really no different.
So, is this a medical building or is just gonna be a recreation building?
Both, uh, it was used as a Y prior to the purchase.
Correct.
And so it'll still be used as a Y, but it won't be called a Y, uh, but it'll still be used for those, um, services that were, we knew it was under.
Is it a public type or you have to be a member or what?
No, public, public, no membership.
All right, how do you get financed for this?
How did I do it?
Finance, how, how are you operating it?
I'm operating it.
Okay, do people pay to get in?
No.
Free?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Any other questions for the gentleman?
What are the hours of operation?
Um, eight to five, but for the children, um, I was, I actually had a meeting today with the, uh, superintendent of BISD and we talked about some type of after, after school program for the kids that would last up until seven o'clock to keep them off the streets and so we're trying to figure ways to do that, so I guess it would be, you know, a little bit after five if we had an after school program.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for the gentleman? Nope? Okay. Uh, is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak for or against this case?
I would like to speak for, it's something that's been needed in that community since that building has been shut down, there's really no type of community center for the kids or things of that nature and it's something that's probably needed in that community and I appreciate this, Marsaw, uh, trying to get this started and I think it should be approved.
Fantastic, thank you. Any other comments?
I would say it's an added addition to the community, not only does it provide recreation and, uh, allow facilitate, to facilitate, uh, functions in the community, but it's giving whole wellness to the community and I think that's a component that has been missing whereby they can make sure that they can deal with physical therapy, they can deal with, uh, just exercise, they can deal with swimming, they can deal with soccer, football, uh, it, it just opens up so many avenues, uh, by having that facility.
Thank you, Councilman.
I would like to add too, because I am a resident of that area, it would be good that we do have a facility there that we don't have to go across town to go exercise and pull those facilities that you're offering there, so thank you very much.
What was your name and address, ma'am?
Ma'am, would you state your name and address for the record, please?
I apologize for that, my name is Delma Blackman.
Ms. Blackman, what is your address, please?
My address is thirty-three thirty-five Posey.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Rodman Samuel, thirty-seven fifty Posey. Chris Duriel, fifty-three six of Phillips.
And Sam Porigi is not here, so that's okay. So, anything else?
I would also like to add, uh, that, you know, for many, many years while I was council, uh, for work for, the community was so asking for that facility to reopen back to the community for the use of the kids and, um, I'm so grateful to, uh, Mr. Marsaw for stepping up and reopening the facility so that the youth in that area, um, can have a facility that they can, you, they have easy access to because there, there is, uh, three housing developments right in that vicinity and so it's something that's been needed for a very long time and so we're so grateful to you and Mr. Marsaw for doing that, thank you.
I'd like to add one more thing, Delma Blackman, I live right nearby the facility, I just wanna throw this out there, I am a rich difference.
Thank you very much for all the comments, is there any, uh, other comments from the public? None is heard, so we close the public hearing, we have heard from the staff, we also heard from the applicant and, uh, he does understand the one condition, uh, building and the fire code related to be proposed used, uh, to be met by the fire code and fire approval of fire marshal. Uh, with that said, I entertain a motion.
I have a motion to approve with the conditions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And in opposition, the ayes have it, thank you very much. This was our last case, Madam Mayor, we look forward to you sending us home. Mr. Beatty, thank you very much for doing that. Appreciate it.